This conference will now be recorded.
This is a call to order for the planning commission meeting. It's Tuesday, May 10th, 2022. The roll call first, Josh.
Sure. Mary Benton.
Yes.
Lloyd Colston.
Here.
Brandon Jennings.
Here.
Pedro Howerton. Ian Coon.
Here.
Kyle Lewis. That's the one I thought was under here. Cody Richardson.
Here.
Joni Spicer. And Tom Weeley.
Here.
Yes, that's still.
At this time, planning commission members are asked to make declarations of any conflicts of interest or any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their decision. All sides of any item on the agenda, it might come to a fair decision. Any conflicts of interest from the public. At this time, we'll open up the public comments. Persons who wish to address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda. Let's speak now, speaker will be known in three minutes. Any presentations with information purposes or no action would be taken.
I would imagine most of them are for items on the agenda.
Okay, so there's nothing on public comments for items not on the agenda?
I have a comment, since it's not on the agenda.
But that's what this time is for.
Okay, why on earth do we have scooters? All these kids been doing is buying and paying for it and going up and down in the pizza parking lot, speeding through there. You have to watch where you're going, they do it at night time. That's kind of ridiculous. If you're gonna spend the money, spend it on finishing fixing up the park, Wilson Park. You got the money, rent, stay for it. Why not finish it, fix the swimming pool, fix the things that need to be taken care of? Why do you need to spend the money on scooters? Ridiculous, somebody's gonna get run over, somebody's gonna get hit. Somebody's gonna drive them down the brick road where they're missing bricks and potholes and chuck holes and somebody's gonna fall and bust their head and get hurt really bad. So why bother doing that?
Um, this is the zoning commission. We're just gonna find a new board, I think that would be a matter for your commissioners.
Okay.
Take it off the table.
But if this is on record, then maybe they'll hear it.
But even then, that's not a city property. That's a property owned by somebody. That's a property owned by business.
But was it a property of the city for them to bring the scooters? No.
It's a building.
It could be, if they're violating laws, it's a, I mean, this point, they have to take up police department as well. There's supposed to be eighteen, as far as I know, to rent them. So if it's people under eighteen, then that would be something for police department. Or if they're riding on the sidewalks, I don't know. I appreciate your call. What else? All right, we'll move to the meeting minutes. Any one here? Conflict with the practical. Meeting minutes for April 12, point two are approved. So on the considerations, item number two, consider the viability of rezoning for West Madison Avenue of an R2 medium density residential district to a C2 restricted commercial district.
You not have to do a public hearing for this, since we're all in this.
Or what do you think?
Yeah. Basically, the last month, we held a public hearing. And the applicant asked it to be tabled. The applicant asked us to move forward. Was there anybody here representing the applicant? Okay. The proposal, the change to it, instead of only a portion of the right of way, it would now be all of that 10th Street, third, whatever you wanna call it. On the plan, it's 10th Street, it would be Third Street if it went through. So that's the only difference, is we're extending that out. That area is actually, doesn't have a zoning designation today. So I don't see huge issues with that. If I could actually see what I was doing. Pull it up on my app at least. So before it cut off like right about there, and now it goes on over to here. That's really the only change. They're still requesting the same rezoning from R2 to C2 for that, this piece here. This, if you remember from last time, this portion here is actually already C2, so it's only, there are many of it. So, questions? We do have somebody here, if you have any questions, from representing the applicant here.
Questions? You want motion to approve that? I want motion to approve rezoning.
I'll make the motion to approve rezoning of 401 to C2 restricted commercial district.
Say, can you hear some motion?
Yep, need a roll call load. Mary Benton.
Yes.
Lloyd Colston.
Yes.
Brandon Jennings.
Yes.
Ian Coon.
Yes.
Kyle Lewis.
Yes.
Cody Richardson.
Yes.
And Tom Weeley.
Yes.
So, the motion was opened up by the majority, so. So, that goes to the commissioners.
Yeah, to go through the commission for their approval.
Planning commission revised rezon 401, West Madison 2 to the city commissioners.
Correct.
Consideration number three. It's kind of following on the same thought here, so. Consider the possibility of vacating a portion of the alley and a portion of Third Street with Jason Block number two part of the sufficient to our city. Set up for discussion.
Again, the same scenario. This property, I'll bring it up again so we can see it again. It was originally, we were asking for a vacation for just this 35 feet, and now it's, oh, I think that's 80 feet. Along with the alley for the deterioration, I guess is the right word, for that whole property. Those two is what they're requesting to be vacated. And this, just also to remind you, this will be a utility easement, because there is, right now, there's somewhere a ditch there. This project proposes to cover that up and sort it in tight. And all the utilities would be, for the most part anyways, would be pulled back out of the retaining.
Into the eventual older stop requesting utility by the city.
I believe that's gonna be covered by the developer.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
It was a two. Oh, I'm sure you're asking.
Are you requesting any aid from the city to promote utilities for that area?
Now, it's already served. We're, there is a stub, San Diego sewer that stops. That wouldn't have deserved the rear of the lot, so we'll set a new manual to clear all that. We're actually in contract with the city for the lots, so quite the obvious.
Discussion. With proof. I got a second, hold on a second. Questions?
Yes. Just a second. Mary Benton.
Yes.
Lloyd Colston.
Yes.
Brandon Jennings.
Yes.
Ian Coon.
Yes.
Kyle Lewis.
Yes.
Cody Richardson.
Yes.
And Tom Weeley.
Yes.
Motion approved. We advise the commissioners to refill. Third Street, Jason Block number two. Now we move on to the public hearings. I remember we were pulling a public hearing to consider the viability of rezoning one more day Key Largo Lane from an R1 low density residential district to an R3 high density residential district. So Josh, he's gonna go over this, and we'll have public comments.
Do you want to go ahead and open the public hearing? Okay, so before us tonight is a rezon request, as stated, from R1 low density residential to R3 high residential. The property is at 1118 Key Largo. The request was filed by Jose Pals Antebaros. Is Jose here or anybody from the here? I don't think so.
Is that the end of the Key Largo, right?
Why is the other end to the very whole of it?
Yeah.
Okay. My match being silly to me. This is at the end of Key Largo, as was just stated there. The subject property is at 1118 Key Largo. The surrounding area is residential, public, and there is religious use to the South foot of church. Forest Glen is to the north, residential is east on Key Largo. The school district owns the property to the west of the site, and the church owns the property to the south. The property is about four acres, and the proposal was to develop a duplex on the property. Yeah, and they have to consider that as an R1, R3. R1 district, I'm just gonna say this right now for the purpose of the meeting. R1 does not allow anything beyond a single residence without a condition of use permit. To get two, you could get a conditional use permit. For R2, it allows two units, the proposal is three. And so, talking to the applicant, we felt that R3 was the most appropriate, because it serves that outright. The three units that he's proposing on the property. Now, as I spoke with a number of residents, he would be allowed per the zoning district to build more than three units, but that is not what he was proposing. So the property history, it was developed as a single family dwelling in about 1900, according to county records. It's been added on to a number of times since then. I don't know this for sure, but I believe that it was probably the first house that was there.
No.
No.
This was made in from over by Francis Willard, well after all ours were built.
Okay, well, I guess the 1900 is wrong. I take that back, that's where that came from, though, that was the, that was what the county had. So, you can't trust the county records. At one point, this was split off, it's not a formal subdivision, it was done in the 70s and the 80s for mostly the house we brought in. The property was then, this whole property, not just this one, all of the Key Largo area, among a bunch of other properties around the city. I think Timberland was another one. Was in 1986. Actually, Forest Glen was part of that annexation too, I'm sorry. It's changing the resolution, so if you're still in there. So, as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned, it is designated as residential, proposed use is residential. The plan, we didn't differentiate between densities of residential, it just was residential. If this was approved, it would also help to meet the, that's the prime goal of encouraging available houses. So building smart and getting some of that issues that were happening with housing shortage to secure us. The only thing that's not residential according to that plan is this school district property there. It looks kind of funny there, but that's the high school property. So residential districts, the intent is to have the different densities. The change would be consistent with what the film district is trying to. So here's the, here's the property, my understanding, I wish Stappin was here. The understanding was the building side would be here, this is the house, and this would be there. Forest Glen is what you see in the background. There's the existing home. This is the portion of the property that's off to the southwest, south and southwest of the house. This is Key Largo Lane. It is pretty narrow. This is the, this is the intersection of Cape and Key Largo, just to show you where, what we're looking at at the other end. So, recommendation, this is a hard one for me. I would like to recommend that it be approved, but I have some reservations, based mostly off of what I have heard from some of the citizens that live in that neighborhood. The reason I said approval at all is it is, it's residential, it's compatible with the area. The lot could handle these additional units. Helps with the housing shortage. The general area is seeing an increase in housing demand in this area as well. That being said, like I was noting, there was obviously some significant opposition, as evidenced by the number of people here. The big issue is Key Largo is pretty narrow. It probably needs to be paved in order to adequately serve any additional development. It also is, I must have skipped on the slide. It also is not served by sewer, it's served by septic tanks. It does have water, it does have the other utilities, but it is not served by sewer. The lot could handle additional septic tanks.
But have you verified that?
No, no.
We're not sure if we can handle the septic tanks.
Well, you're the plumber. Right. I didn't know the area.
I'm saying it's a priority.
First of all, we have to get a fixture, second of all, we have to have filtration tanks. And as a multi-family dwelling, it's gonna take up a lot of area.
True.
And then you'd have to do separate, per duplex.
No, not necessarily.
Well, then what happens if one pours bleach, I mean, you could kill that leach field pretty quickly, right?
Oh, no, bleach won't hurt it.
Well, I'm just saying.
The only issue is your neighbor could clog it. That would be the only issue. But for efficiency concerns, I mean, one septic system, I'm pretty sure is legal by company definition. So I'd have to verify that, but don't change it very much, so. There's a lot of legwork to determine.
Right.
Septic system.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, my comment was based on just a high level, technically, to picture it.
Yeah. My one concern is we have a development on Running Horse that has eight lots out there that cannot be developed until a street gets put in. I bet Running Horse is wide enough.
Probably.
So, I mean, it's hard to, hard to prove one without going off Running Horse, because that's, that's very, 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 I mean, it's already plotted and ready to go. So it's hard to approve something like this when you've got something ready to be, dying to be developed, that we can't get streets in out there.
So, well, I went out there and I looked at it and, what did the city attempt at spot zoning or spot rezoning? It directly opposes the city's master plan, the zoning in the first place. Can't, they can choose like dots on the map, what do you want to do with it? Unless it benefits everyone, like a store, church, not just one entity. So I'm opposed to this, based on many jurisdictions, this is illegal. So, there's plenty other parcels in the city we want to develop against the housing prices, this is one. This should remain a single resident.
If we keep making small exceptions, we need to include overall so many other comprehensive plans, so.
I think the big one would be sewer, it's inside city limits. I would feel like if you're gonna do a development like this, you must tie into city sewers, right, or not?
Yeah, I agree, you definitely want a current sewer system, especially for that volume. I mean, there's any nearby creeks or ponds, it could be violated, it could be lawlessness.
But we zoned R3, sky's the limit.
Yeah.
You know, start with one, next you have six little acres of this, which is fantastic, you know, meets housing.
You do need housing, but I agree with Paul and Brandon, it's small enough, right?
And it's totally, they lower the local property values, you know, you can't put that amount of property on this, it's just a new house.
Remind me, how many duplexes am I proposing?
Two, three, three duplexes, yeah.
No, just, just one.
One duplex?
Just one.
Sorry, you could.
I mean, just what's worth, I mean, just be offered to rezoning for the unlimited R3.
Correct. So R3 would allow.
We can speculate, you're probably gonna put more, more duplexes.
I would, sir.
Unlimited R3s?
It was the.
No, it's unlimited.
Yeah, so once you set it, and they get put in a apartment on what.
You, you have to do the setbacks, I mean, there's certain restrictions, but, yeah, sky's the limit.
Excuse me, is this the property that addresses this? This is for Key Largo?
Key Largo, okay.
It's close.
Just make a motion. We say a motion. I'll make a motion to open a public hearing on Key Largo property.
Yes, I'd like to make some comments when you get there.
Second.
Okay.
Motion approved, the public hearings are now open, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I do have some pictures of the property that this same construction outfit is working on, and I believe it's also on the agenda the second. It's in terrible state of disrepair. And it's really, really bad. One of my concerns, because I live over on Forest Glen, is what it's gonna do to the property values, just having construction like that going on, even though construction would be temporary. I am totally opposed to the R3 zoning, because that would bring in an unlimited amount of construction on this four acres of property, whatever justice it was. So as a resident of the area, I am opposed to this zoning. And if you look closely at the area map here, and right on the south side of the street, right where the corner is, where the little L shape is, on the south side of the road, it appears that there's a pond there, and then maybe septic overflow, and that's one of my concerns. Just on the south side of the road, you could blow that up, right, right in that area right there. This is an office.
If you have concerns about septic system, you can contact the city.
Yeah, I had never been back there.
We've been in pond in there before. I think that last.
So if there was a pond in there, you know, it's gonna create problems with the septic quadrants and everything, they have to go someplace. They're probably gonna go to the south.
So the pond is there.
Those are my comments, thank you.
My name is Debbie Savala, I live at 1015 Key Largo Lane, and this is really the best name. That land that he's wanting to build on, there was a pond there. Our kids used to play there, I moved over there in 1986, those houses were built in 1983 as rentals, so they really weren't built the greatest. So in 1986, we moved there, and like I said, the James's here moved with us out there sometime after that. Our kids used to play around in a pond, there was a pond on that land, and the city moved that pond, I can't even remember what year it was, it's too long ago. But we have always had issues, we have septic tanks in that area, ever since they built those houses on Forest Glen, all that water goes downhill, all of that land is downhill. Since we are septic, we actually have to watch, when we wash our dishes, when we wash our clothes, because if it's raining a lot out there, you're gonna have backup, because all of that water comes downhill and it floods our yards. We put your dirt on how many times trying to build the land up just a little bit, just to help it. But the more buildings you build, the more gathering system, the more water you have coming downhill. We lived out in that area because we wanted country living, we love it, it's beautiful, we get deer in our backyards all the time, we get geese, we get turkey, we love it out there. Why would we want duplexes? I've got a new duplex next door to me, half the time the people who live there don't want to cut their grass, they throw everything but their momma in their backyard, and it's junky, they've got pallets and everything else. People who live there stay there one or two years if they make it that long, paying their rent. If not, they trash the area, you know, the tax guy will be there. It's the same old, same old all the time, so why would we want more duplexes in that area? If we need housing in our city, why don't they build houses? People don't want duplexes, it's just people who's here temporarily. People in our city, they want houses, they come from Texas, they come from Oklahoma, they come from everywhere else, working at Creestown, they want a place to live, they don't want to move to Winfield, they like our city, so build houses, have our city industry, let up some of that land and build there.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please. Sir?
Hi there, my name is Nick Albrecht, I live at 1219 Forest Glen, my property backs right up to there. I mean, honestly, my biggest concern is the amount of traffic that moving to an R3 zoning would allow. The, the road is so narrow and is a very gravel road as it is, you're gonna have to, especially, because I think what his end goal would be, would be built more and more and more, I believe his end goal is an apartment complex, which would then require, imagine that the road be paved, which would then put specials on to people living on Key Largo, which would be a fair bit of money, from what I understand, when they pay and pay, was a significant specials that went on to some people. But addition to that, I would imagine that that level of building would also require sewage to be sent to that area again, adding specials to those people living on that street. Not only to say that, but also the putting in, especially multi-family dwellings into that little area right there, is gonna change the overall neighborhood dynamic, not just for Key Largo, but also for Forest Glen. Kind of the fact that there's only one way in or out of that area, and if you're gonna put in multi-housing or multi-family dwellings into that area, it just seems like it's not the best option. Because trying to get, you know, a fire truck in that area is already hard, but imagine putting more facilities and more dwellings in there, it'd be hard, so. But yeah, that's it. So, I agree.
Anyone else?
Yeah. I live right next to him, I live at 1209, it's also to the north, butts up right behind the house there. Kind of gonna just re-hit on some of the things everybody else has said, quality of life is really the biggest thing, we all moved out there, it's all people building homes, we're all concerned about our quality of life and our property value, because as we know, houses that are next to these. as we know, houses that are next to these, from the research I can tell, went down an average of 20%. Houses that are in areas with duplexes and apartments. And although he's just talking about maybe one duplex now on that, on that east side. We all know if you zone that whole area R3, he's able to do whatever he wants to after that. So later on, if he wants to come and build an apartment there on that, on that website, he sure about can. The thing about the sewer system goes, it's septic now. And we had a septic problem, probably about four years ago. There was an individual that lived in this gentleman's home before. We had a problem where actually there was matter that was seeping in that hit his well. And he was watering his grass, the water was tested. People came out and they did, they redid, they dug up this septic system, redid it all. As far as I know, it's hopefully okay, that was when the Sealeys lived there, that was before this gentleman that lives there now. At this residence asking for rezoning. The street, when we're talking about Key Largo, very narrow again, one lane. Basically, if you're going to get by, somebody has to pull in somebody's grass or somebody's lawn, get by. Talking about a bunch of traffic going up and down there, it's not going to work very well. Eighth Street is the big thing too, because you've got, I've got Cree Stone out there. Now you throw a bunch of homes out there along with apartments who already have, you're going to have to redo Eighth Street. I'm only talking about widening Eighth Street, you're going to have to put curbing, you're going to have to put drainage, because now, just like rain we had, heavy rain we just had. It flooded half the street. We have to basically down Eighth Street go down to one lane in one section, because the drainage on each side is poor. You're going to have to add sidewalks, because there's going to be a lot more people walking and traveling through there. So you're not only talking about redoing Key Largo, you're also talking about doing a whole event of Eighth Street there. As it goes towards Key. I need to bring your time back.
Anyone else, sir?
My name is John Bossi, I represent Bible Christian Church, which is property to the south. We just had a few concerns that there was going to be developed, so it's already been brought up, such as the, the drainage would all come down on us since we're south of the property. There's also a creek that goes right adjacent to our property that would be downstream from this property, it goes to be a sewer, to be a septic system. We're also concerned with, we have a few children that come over and play on our property, playground equipment. And if more families were moved in there, we might have more trespassing back into the woods where the children could be playing. So it would, it would need to be fenced appropriately by the builder, I would think, to keep kids from coming on our property for liability reasons. And currently, the brush has been cleared along our boundary. And that has been pushed onto our side after they trimmed the brush. So that would need to be addressed, it would need to be removed, I would think, instead of being pushed onto us. And we've also talked to him about this, and nothing's happened. The brush is still there. And we're also concerned if it was to be developed, if any specials would be assessed to us, or infrastructure fees, it would be a concern. All our money is from donations, and I wouldn't want to have to tell the congregation that we have to pay for developing, for paving Key Largo Lane or something like that. Alright, thank you.
You bet, thank you. Matt?
My name is Tom Sander James, this is my husband Matt, I live in one of the four Key Largo Lane, I live right next to it, it's going to be beside me. Eighth Street, I would also like to add that we now have a lot of high school kids that walk back and forth to school, which is wonderful, because there is no sidewalk. So you, you know, you're adding more traffic there, that's, you know, could be a problem. We also have a school mess that stops down there on the corner, so that's going to work, there's two or three deep of us, which we deal with it, it's fine. Quality of life, that we, that's who we want to be, single family homes, great, there is some property there. But you start talking duplexes that could turn into apartment buildings, you've completely changed our neighborhood. That road, and y'all keep talking, well, you know, the sewer, sewer, we'll then have sewer pave the street. Okay, if you paint that street, it's very narrow, it's one person, we all know the advocate out there. We pull over, somebody else goes, we just all participate that way in very friendly, very nice, we take care of each other out there. You paint that, you put in sewer, you paint that road, you're going to widen it, I'm going to be able to park my car in front of the garage and like, the end of my car is going to be a curb. You are going to take out most of my front yard, all of our front yards, and out all of our trees that have been out there for multiple years. So we moved out there in 89, I planted all those trees. We have trees and landscaping all through there. And yes, Forest Glen is built, we were promised there was going to be a waterway built, so all that, some of that water we put washing on us, that didn't happen.
Who's the biggest problem?
This is the biggest.
For Freeman?
Yes, so it was promised, it was never done, no matter how much we asked. So there is water washing, and we're dealing with it, but you put even more brush, you're going to have more water problems, there are water problems out there. So it really does affect us greatly, and we appreciate your consideration.
That was Forest Glen, right?
I'm, I'm.
I'm talking about the drainage from, from.
Yeah, from Forest Glen, because they're up higher, there are washes, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on this parcel? Sir? Yeah, I live out there on 26.718. And all those homes were built on three quarters acre minute when we moved out, and that was one reason we moved out. And if he wants to build single family homes out there on it, that would be fine. But he's not monitoring that, and he knew that when he bought it. He's trying to change the rules now. So, you know, that to me, if you know right there, he knew, he knew, he knew what he was doing with that. Okay, thank you. That says it. Oh, Matt James, on the drainage, you know, it affects our quality laughter during COVID. I hold 11 tons of dirt in my yard, just trying to fill in horse outs and stuff like that, and you can already tell how much it's been in. It's a constant battle. The road is very poorly maintained. It's just light enough for one car, and a lot of the construction down towards Eighth. Neighbors to us, their carports will have to be ripped up and moved, because it's going to be within the right way for two lanes, if it ever come to that, or sewer. It wasn't ever designed when it was laid out to be a heavy residential area, and it was in the country when it was laid out. And the reason we all want it was for quality of life, we liked the air view. Kids being able to have room to run and play. Couple of years ago, my granddaughter was going to play in the backyard. All summer long, I couldn't take them in our backyard because the neighbors behind us didn't run their air conditioner. And the filthy language that come out of that house. The language in the house was terrible. And luckily, the church allowed us a couple of months, a month to go down. My granddaughter would play on the swing set and the slide, and they even offered us bottled water. That was the one place I could enjoy my grandchildren. You know, that's not right. Thank you, appreciate it. Any other comments on that Key Largo parcel?
Can you speak again?
I don't have a comment, but I have a question. If they were to receive this stipulation of a R3, would that mean that they, the city would be inclined to build a new road?
That's all their tradition. Yeah, now automatically.
Automatically, okay.
Is there, is there even a right way?
Actually, probably partially is there right away.
So there, there is a deep private, it's just.
That's basically a private, or, it's not a private, so it's not even a public land.
Who maintained that road?
It was a private drive, and they, and they gave it a street road because neighbors of the Knights who lived in the duplexes. Her husband had a heart attack, and so they needed a 911 address, and so that's why it was given the name Key Largo Lane, because we were actually Route 2, Box 323, when we first came out there. Because it was a private drive, and we lived on the road.
Thank you.
Everybody lived on that.
Thank you. We'll have to close the comments, there's only other Key Largo comments. Okay, make a motion to close the comments in public.
Our public area is closed on the Key Largo zoning. The discussions for the commissioners.
Send my piece.
Given the condition of the property access. Given the citizen input, I make a motion that this issue be approved.
I would like to say for you that the builder is not here, so to me, he's, he's obviously not taking this seriously.
Well, I think you're right, he is, yeah, I agree with you.
And that's another condition that I was really hoping the door would.
I would like to hear the side, but. He was notified, I sent public address last week to go find him.
He, he talked to me, he's a acquaintance of mine, he talked to me about this project four years, like, three years ago. He wanted to build a couple of single family homes up there. And thought my idea, well, that's, it's a good plan. But I raised some of the sewer issues and road issues with him back then, so.
Well, we definitely have housing.
We do.
But this is probably, this is not the place to.
Not when you've got the amount of work that have to go into this project, we have other developments that I would love to develop, we can just get some streets to them. You know, there, there's other areas that are primed and ready to go.
And my opinion is, there's streets, but the sewage, I would like to see sewer.
Well, there are comprehensive plan, we definitely.
And we do need priorities.
Definitely. So the streets.
Sam, pipe into that chat.
Alright. So we won't address any rezoning in the comprehensive plan, for now, zoning needs to stay how it is, so. Lloyd made a motion to deny rezoning, second that. In the roll call vote.
Yeah, that would still be approved. So the motion is to deny to a yes vote, is agreeing to that motion, just to clarify that. So Mary Vinton?
Yes.
Lloyd Bulston?
Yes.
Brandon Jelling?
Yes.
Ian Coon?
Yes.
Kyle Lewis?
Yes.
Cody Richardson?
Yes.
And Tom Weaver?
Yes.
We're all in favor of the motion to, or the proposal to rezo Key Largo, Key Largo has been, the developer has applied to re, approach our.
Now, how this works, the next step is that it could go before the city commission. Who has the final approval. What will happen is that they will be given a recommendation to act. Sometimes, a lot of times what happens in this situation is definitely draws. I will visit them.
While we're on the topic of life safety, the, the forest behind there is a concern mainly because of wildfires. We're not getting out of the drought soon. Kansas almost becoming a tinderbox. So do what you can to keep your property trimmed up, so that if a fire starts, you do waste that some defensive space.
Thank you, folks, for showing up, we appreciate your input.
I have a question, the letter that we got was sent out to just a few of us, the people that live down on the east end of Key Largo Lane, we're no one. Sure, I can address that. In fact, I spoke to, I didn't speak to you, but I spoke to your neighbor to the north. The way it works when we do a notification for one of these is we send it out to everybody that's within 200 feet of the property. In hindsight, I will admit, I probably should have went ahead and sent it. But that's, that's the reason that you, that you didn't receive it for your request.
You said this is going to go to the city commission possibly with their recommendation. Does that, with since it's being voted and denied here, how does that affect the city commission vote, does that mean it has to happen?
The commission has to have the final say.
Do they have to have a majority, or do they have like unanimous?
In order to overturn or to go against the, the wishes of this body, they would have to have a pretty forced majority.
Okay.
I heard you mentioned disagree.
I spoke with Mr. and Mrs. Pos. Mrs. Pos likes the country living, and she has told her husband that she does not want him to continue on with this. I spoke with Mr. Pos also, and he told me, he says he's not going to do it, because his wife doesn't like it either, and she would rather have the country living like this. But that is for you guys to contact him.
Thank you. Alright, let's move on to the next.
Just a quick question, will we be notified when the city commission is taking that under?
It will be on the. It will be the first meeting in June.
But decisions are on the website, okay. It will be on the city's website. Alright, moving on, number five, hold a public hearing to consider the possibility of pre-zoning 2305 North Eighth Street. Of the R1, low density residential district to an R3 high density residential district. I'm going to turn this on to Josh, he's going to go through exactly what the request is.
Sure. This is actually a very similar, but he's had the same proposal on this property. The reason I put this on the map, and this is something that he would have to address if he dealt with it, what he blew is the flood plain. So for some areas, it would be difficult to develop. But he, he could potentially do that, so I wanted to point that out before we even go into further. This property is 3.4 acres. And of course, same zoning. According to county records, this was built in 1962. Additional site improvements have made, and I wasn't aware of any other land use cases, and I haven't figured out when it was annexed either. It was then before the other area, I imagine. So basically, the comments on the comprehensive plan are identical to the, the last case. It is slated to be a residential property, but.
How is he proposing to do something, put in streets? No.
This one, he was just wanting to put a duplex as well. That's, that's all I know, except what you told me.
So why would we do a street?
Same problem, R1 doesn't allow, R2 doesn't allow additional use for that, because that's three units total. Because the existing house would stay.
So, but he could do a replant, right? He could split the lot.
He could, but he would have to, on top of all the other stuff we've talked about tonight, he'd have to do that, which is going to make it financially, most likely. So that, oh, I guess I should at least mark this, this area around it is of course all R1, with this, this yellow is the school district, it's public. So here's the existing house. And as somebody noticed, noted earlier, there is, there is some debris, it's been working on this house for a long time.
They haven't worked on it for about three weeks.
This is looking south along Eighth Street. And again, instead of before, it is a pretty narrow street as well, and looking back to the north. There is the property across Eighth Street that's hidden back in the trees. That's, that would be just across there. So this is essentially the same recommendation. I have a little bit less issues with this one, because I have no issues with the street, Eighth Street, yes, is definitely too narrow too, but the street that serves it is sufficient for what they're doing.
So who, who we asking, are they? People are making this request, are they professional developers?
No.
He's a contractor.
He's been a contractor, he's been a sheet rocker, he was my sheet rocker for 10 years. Which dog moved down here, got a wish to a little bit, it's got quite a few rental properties.
So they have no experience?
Not developing. No, no. But I didn't either before I started. You know, it's one of those things where.
But I'm sure he's probably worked that.
Yes, yeah, he's been a contractor for like six years, seven years. Doing little, little stuff. And he flips the house or two every two years. He lives in it two years, then buys. So that's how he makes some money.
Who else, Josh?
Oh, the only thing I would add is that it does have the utilities, all the utilities available. Okay, make a motion, you can open the public comments, North Eighth Street. Hold on, sir, we'll be right with you. Second, okay, we can open that up, three minutes apiece. And.
The county owns the land behind this place. It's on the north side of the, he's talking about is her driveway. It builds in. Is, if you're going to make that an R3, is we would like to include the county's land as R3 also.
Okay, that's a separate issue. You'll need to bring that forward. You'll need to bring that to Josh and go through the proper channels to rezone that request and rezone.
Will we have an opportunity? Well, we got this notice, this is the first time we do anything like this. Will we have a notice or when's the appropriate time, Jessica?
Josh. If you would be interested in applying for a rezon of that property, you could go through the same channel. This gentleman did, just had to come into my office and fill out an application. We would, we would do the same public hearing process for it as well.
But the only time we want, if you're going to do it for the one in front of us, it would just make sense for us. But I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the?
Or the executive parcel service?
Rich Jones. I live immediately to the south of that parcel. A duplex doesn't bother me. A duplex doesn't bother me, but if you're considering zoning it for high-density residential, which was just discussed, could be just like the 30-minute apartment complex, I don't know. I definitely would not like to see that happen. That flood plain you were talking about, that creek runs through my property, runs through, and I'm going to call it Joe's property because he only lived forever. 2019, I bought a bridge. Forty-foot bridge, bridge is $1,000 to put. You put properties out there and you change the landscape and you change the drainage, I'm going to find another bridge. I don't want to do that. As it is now. I've been in this place 12 years, 13 years now. That creek actually starts up around northern west of Cree Stone. Cree Stone has increased the roof, Cree Stone has increased their asphalt. Can pack, they go around, it's increased their asphalt, the roof. You've got a permanent and housing development going on west of Skyline. That's changed the drainage. The high school, when they put in their athletic field, changed the drainage. I get a lot of water. But I get trash. And I'm tired of picking beer cans out of my creek. It's trashed. Oh, my. My creek's four feet deeper now than it was 10 years ago because the water flow changes. This isn't good. Environmentally, it's not good. I don't need the neighbors, that many neighbors, not my neighbors. One other concern, people talk about Eighth Street. Eighth Street, if I read the sign properly, is rated at five tons. Well, let's look into that because if you check out the weight on a UPS delivery truck, it is 17,000 pounds you can carry. This creek still is a certain.
Sort of like Scotty.
They said they got permission from the city to do it.
Tractor trailers weighing 80,000 plus pounds on a 10-ton road, five-ton roof. Are you right?
Yeah, I've seen semis on that road.
More fixer roof, but it's too expensive. That special plan that paid off, they don't, just after about a year, I appreciate that, but still, I don't want to buy another.
It's got a bunch of.
Thank you totally.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else?
The road, Eighth Street, it, like they say, it floods all the time. Kids walking from the duplexes on Skyline Road, they get splats. Nobody fixes that road. There's planners that are in front of that aisle there that are blocking the gutter, the way the water goes down in the alleyways. And so the roads flood. If you go further north of Key Largo Lane, right there in front of Forest Glen, the road is cracking. It's falling in because there's so much water, it's caving in. I don't know why the city doesn't take a look at it because sooner or later, you're going to lose a couple of big chunks just north of Forest Glen on the west side of the road. The water is the issue out there. Why would they want to build more duplexes on that property? When you have a big water issue? You're going to have sewage problems, even if you have city sewer, we're still going to have problems.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sir? Although I am on the forest line, I do, obviously, I have some concerns with Eighth Street as well there. I mean, there's a significant amount of traffic on that road on a daily basis, especially going back to Forest High School. And the more properties and more dwellings that we add to that area is just going to increase that traffic. And without adding then stoplights at, for, as a A then radio, without putting in sidewalks, you're, we're then looking at danger to, to residents that are just, I think, silly. Just because again, at that high traffic area, it's crazy. That's my concern. Thank you.
Make a motion and public comments.
All right, one more. This will be real, same thing that sent me out of one, Eighth Street, just you're talking about drainage, like people said, it's going to have to be redone if you start adding a lot more development in there. Like this gentleman said before, I think there's just, you know, our city does need more housing. But I think there's just a lot more applicable areas that would be easier developed than to go into these mostly single-family residential areas and try to develop a bunch of apartments and duplexes and stuff. Then he said it best, it's just, there's, you know, these, some of these places are just waiting for amenities and stuff to be done. So I think those will be, if you're looking for a place that's high, that would be a place for some of the use, it's going to require a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, make a motion to close public hearing. Second. Right. Public hearings are closed. Discussion among the zoning board. All the matter.
In addition to what we just heard in the previous public hearing, and my concern is flood plain. The flood plain, when you build in a development, you're not going to reduce the amount of water flowing into that flood plain, you're going to increase it. Therefore, I would say I'm going to make a motion that we reject this proposal.
Second.
I know it's not a term. Have you noticed construction going on on that house?
All right, sir. We're going to be here all night to keep doing that. Process, thank you.
I make a motion.
All right, second. And again, this motion, a yes means that you are voting to deny it, just to make sure that's good. The Mary Bennen?
Yes.
Lloyd Colston?
Yes.
Brandon Jelling?
No.
You're voting to?
I think a duplex would be, do well.
I just wanted to make sure. Ian Coon?
Yes.
Kyle Lewis?
Yes.
Cody Richardson?
Yes.
And Tommy?
No. Oh, sorry. Yes, we denied.
That's why I. Yes. People are going to vote, no, that's.
Order immediately to deny the rezoning of the portion of Third Street adjacent block two, hard places, addition to our city from R1 to R3.
So I can make a comment as well. I'm the commissioner, that is very much in favor of progress in our city. We need to do better with our streets, with our sewer, with everything. But I cannot, in good conscience, go along with this because there is no plan to do it appropriately. It's just going to be willy-nilly. I can't deal with willy-nilly.
I think R3 is a lot of place for this area, but I would consider R2. So might look to.
Split it and go down to R2. I mean, there's ways to do it, but just not R3.
Awesome. All right. Now, I do appreciate your input on the street. As we move into comprehensive planning, we have a hard time getting in for comprehensive citizens. So your comments about the streets and about the storm drainage issues and the sewer problems will be addressed in a comprehensive plan. I appreciate that. Now, you know, facilities, the roads are very expensive and the city works hard to acquire plenty of grants to build and stuff. Something to do very slow.
Number four, economic development.
Yep.
Well, people, please, all go ahead and pass this out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take it down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate. Yes, this is just my.
Thank you.
What we talked about last time. I'm going to get a title page. We should not work. I kind of agree, it's kind of. New, new day on it. I imagine that it wouldn't have been for. So then we've been at a full meeting. So I'm proposing that we focus on economic development and spend about 30 seconds on parks and recreation. And that's about it. Just because I, we're not terribly late, but if you're like me, you're. I actually thought that was well.
We love the way they want us. That's why we're here. We want to do what we're representing.
I've been in your.
We just have to be careful as we, most of them don't really like progression.
Yeah.
So we have to be very careful that we set aside motions and stuff like that because we have got to progress also. A lot of people, they, they want, they want Forest Glen gone. I mean, if you really got down to it, you know, so. But Forest Glen added a ton of housing and really did a lot for their property values. So we got to be very cautious as we move forward that.
There was also some stuff missed. I totally agree with the drainage issues you had to talk about. There was some big problems there. That's why like when the development, where Brandon's developing was done, he actually had proper drainage that was installed.
That's why I brought out a comment about professional developers. If you're just kind of an amateur, you don't, you don't have the experience to see all the, all the force out to see all the issues.
Well, we've got running horse out here. I would love to develop, but the developer did the same thing, just didn't get away with it like the dead of Forest Glen. So it sits there empty.
Sorry. Drainage problems, solar drainage problems as well.
He's what, it's, he was supposed to put in streets. It's from what Josh told me. I, I was trying to buy all that up there, but nothing could be built and still streets get put in. Plus retail specials and then drainage and it's just a whole snowball thing.
Yeah, we get the city to widen that stream, that's one issue. And if we get the city to put it in sewer lines, that's the other issue. And if you get the city to look at the drainage issues, that's three issues. And I don't see us moving very fast on any of those.
Well, you got to come up with the money because now it's a couple of million dollars right there.
Right. So I'm not being critical, I'm being real.
Well, the city has limited budgets. So money doesn't go very far like.
Oh, the city didn't even own that road, so. Grandparents that wrote, based on the copy of Dan's, wouldn't own it. My understanding, when that was annexed, it was on the list to receive maintenance.
Yeah.
And is the paymentable on the maintenance? I don't know. My understanding is the city grazes. Maybe not from there. The city does have responsibility to keep that.
I live on Main Street, at my maintenance, Main Street was gravel chip.
It's what?
A chip of bill. Oh. That's normal though for that kind of street.
I'm not being critical, I'm not real.
Well, that's why we're here to address these issues. Once we come over the plan, then it's all the commissioners come over the board and sort of.
One more question though around this. Are there any rules or regulations? I mean, obviously just something, but as far as multiple properties, single-family home, duplexes on one property. But to me, having a single-family home and a duplex, a random assortment of things on one property, it doesn't look clean.
That, that would be for that to be split or platted.
That would be often, you know, for other.
Yeah. And if it was platted, the Eighth Street, I would not have it. But the Key Largo one, yeah, which would be, would elevate the whole thing. In fact.
But if you just, if they could put the one, the key one control in the one acre, there wouldn't be anybody stopping them from building several homes.
No, these people are here to stop.
It's, a plaque would still have to come through here to.
But they're, you know, they made comments, well, we don't like to build single-family. Yeah. At this moment, they don't.
Yeah.
Get that on the table.
Yeah, there's a lot of resistance problems.
Which it should be on that.
But the lot size back there could be a difference. They could still be a good sized lot back there.
So who can apply for permits? Do you personally own this property or how do the rules work on? Or rezone, I'm sorry, apply to rezone.
Yeah, if you own a property in the city, you can apply there.
That's, that's the word called.
That's it. Okay. You can do it. Now, I've had people come to me with applications before. And I don't get out of it.
Well, my concern is, I know you're allowed to work on your own dosis without acquiring inspections, but if you start getting into drainage and sewage, you know, you're affecting the whole environment, which means that your neighbors and everybody else, so. Maybe we should address the trade board about who is allowed to install.
Well, in this case, the.
No, if you, if you're going to touch your electric, your sewer and your water, you can't. You have to have a hired professional, or.
Even for your.
Even for your own.
Okay.
I mean, I've never been in a little.
I think that's changed last I heard.
It's in the. It's, it's a little looser than that, but for the anything.
So we kind of do stuff, definitely have to.
Right, you can, since we're on the topic anyways, you can rewire your own home that you live in. You can plum your own home that you live in. But when it comes to actually connecting into.
Yeah.
The main, like, like the.
Case of.
Yeah. For car drainage.
Or getting, you know, natural gas.
Yeah.
That's regulated. Those are, those are no different.
I think there's a H Street that just got shut down, didn't it? Big orange plaque with on there, so for the weekends.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to talk about this economic development chapter, just kind of what I wanted to do with wrap up of the discussion? We talked about this in Zep last month. At our meeting. I don't wanna go over stuff we already done over. I am still working on. A way to get proper surveying. It's probably gonna have to wait now until we get that new communication structure to replace. I think somebody helped me kind of. Randy is too busy to. So we're still working on that, so I put a note in here on that one, on four or five where there's a.
See, that's what the papers say.
Yeah, oh, the communication. So what I'm saying, what I, the point of that was to tell you that I'm still, I wanna update some of these, the survey information at the end because it's from two thousand thirteen. And. Well, I'd say economic development is probably changed. You're being, so we need to get better input on that before we. So really, the only other thing. I don't think I changed much of anything else in here, except for the goals. We, we kind of talked about those. We kind of talked about them at the last meeting. Not that anybody's on this call, but somebody wants to let it be shared. Somebody watching this is gonna get really dizzy. So what I did was I took some of the things we talked about at the last meeting, and not just last meeting. At the meeting that we had back last June and July, I think, if this topic came up. We had, at the time, the Economic Development Director of the County, Kelly First, Carrie Saletti, came and spoke to us a little bit. We also had somebody from the. State come down and talk to us to agree. I just wanted to scroll back where that chapter was. There we go, there we go. Just for the sake of anybody watching, but you all should have this copy anyways. So. A couple of these actions. Apply or participate in at least three economic development grants was one that. Work with economic development partners to secure funding and establish a local grant fund. Was also an action that could be done. Becoming a Main Street community. If you didn't know, you didn't apply for that status. They just didn't feel that we had enough support. That Main Streets, Main Street Arc City, or Arc City, Main Street, whatever we call it. Does exist, it's just not recognized as an official program. The organization exists and they'll be starting to do some. It's a reliable, local, official program. It's called volunteers. That's that grassroots movement. Separate from. Doesn't mean that, one of the things that Main Street needs to do is pull some of these groups like that together. And if nothing else, give them a. So that they're able to go. There's actually a couple of other organizations, retail organizations that are kind of the same way. Shop local type groups, I can't remember what they called it. But there's several retailers association type groups that it comes to. And part of that will be to pull that little night, which can have a chamber in that to extent. As well. So I, I think that's probably still a good goal to have, is, is to increase that. Work with Arc City to promote tourism opportunities, we talked about that at the last meeting. And I sent out a notice that I, I, Joe to, Joe Hunter, the director of Visit Arc City, to put in for the next bet. I'm not sure why we haven't been doing it, but we should have a presence in the next twenty, twenty-three guys, I guess. Yeah. There'll be something in there, at least more than. I think the only thing in there was the number of the chamber or something like that.
A year before this stuff.
Um, okay. So about attracting new industries and businesses, we talked about creating an incubator program. I checked on that and. There sort of was an incubator in the past, in the Perford Commercial Building, they, they did a little bit of that for a while, but that has since really stopped functioning that way. Also, there's been some smaller things, if you know Rhonda Jordan. She had all seven buildings in the downtown area and is kind of propping up businesses in that way, helping them on her own. Not exactly a business incubator in the truest sense, but she is helping. Angel is this. Angel don't. We also had a goal to bring in a couple of new restaurants as well.
Almost ten. That almost now.
New restaurants?
The Chinese restaurant.
We got the. Yes, actually, that has been since we made this goal. Except this isn't a real goal. Should we clarify what we mean by that? Isn't it, isn't it too new? New occupancy.
My, I said Chinese, I remember about a year and a half ago, there was, talk about an Italian restaurant. What happened?
Covid. And they were looking for funding, private funding.
Okay.
A little bit. They needed some, they had no satellite. Need a little bit of help, but.
That's fairly new. They still operate a restaurant in Coffeyville. Independent. Independent, sorry. So they do have that one.
There's always hope.
I haven't heard anything about any other restaurants. That's not a restaurant. I will tell you that, that's not a restaurant.
Basically, they wouldn't stand for.
I can't, I sleep. Then we moved on to retain businesses and support their expansion, so how, how do we do that? We talked about, I don't remember if it was this board or it was the historic board, actually talked about this, but talked about rehabilitating one historic building down there. During this period. That doesn't sound right. I think it was supposed to be per year. Or something, but maybe it was. How do we feel about that?
Just, are you gonna. Rehabilitate historical homes or historical buildings at all is so expensive.
It's very expensive. It's not profitable, that's why.
So are you gonna double feature and go back and apply for grants to do that? Or what's your process and?
There would be, we have, we have the ability to get some grants for that, greatest ability to get grants, but they are there. There is a decent program with CDBG, Economic Development, that can be used, I think that's. That can help with sort of, those sort of things. There's also the historic tax credits that can be used. And then. If you want to pay the upper floors for housing, you can do that with the RHID program, the changes that were just made this past year, or two years ago.
So you, let me hear, are we, are we talking about stuff that's on the historic role or are we just talking about town, town votes?
This is just as a start, but this is your goal, not mine. So if you're thinking just downtown, it should be more, more generic than that, that's fine too. Because not everything that's in the downtown area. Is on the register.
I, I would think it makes it easier to go on.
So we just, so just change it to one downtown building?
Well, I mean, no.
Three is more than that.
I mean, there's, so our house.
Can we write this down? Does that trigger anything? I mean, this, this is gonna happen, someone's gonna have to, a lot of work, you gotta, a committee pick somebody, and how do you pick the building?
Well, and that's the other thing. When this was written, it wasn't clear. I think the argument really should be made that it's not the city that's doing this, it's the city that's supporting this. So.
So we just have a goal of support.
That's somebody hoarding this. Firms we can find, helping them apply for the grants or the tax credits whenever we can. Like, we had to, the city commission had to adopt the provision for the real estate incentive district, for example, so there's certain steps the city has to take to make it easier. For some of those programs.
So how to be a building? So we just wanna do everything in Arc's power to allow somebody to do this, not that our votes actually do it.
That's my thought, right? Because I don't, the city really doesn't want to be in the business, the real estate business.
Yeah.
Much.
That would make more sense to me. Right, that way, so.
Maybe we could just assist.
And rehabilitation.
Why don't we read that one historic assigned facility? Open that up a little bit.
Okay. But I, I don't think it should be rehabilitated because we're not in the business of rehabilitation.
Well, I was gonna say assist and.
Yeah, we could do something like that, because if someone's gonna read this letter and say, well, the city's gonna restore housing, you know, so.
Just like with the temple.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where that was working.
The next thing, I think Kelly First kind of does this, but we need to ensure that they do it and they keep doing it. That's having a database of all the vacant commercial buildings that we have. What I had heard in the past, when I talked to Apple or Carrie, was that sometimes they know that they're vacant, but they can't get hold of enough of anybody to help them. So like, it's an absentee situation where they, they have no way to reach out to them, or they will, or they refuse to. Like, they don't want any help for whatever reason.
Like the owners?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, because they have resources that. They were, I guess what I'm trying to say is they were trying to be proactive. But it's not, that's not always successful. But the key is to have that database so that, so that we, as a city and as a county. It's really, I, I just use we because mostly it's kind of the way Kelly First is doing it anyways. But this can be a recommendation that Kelly First continue to track that and help to make sure that we have. Kept our businesses, our buildings fully. So I think we need more to this goal. Because those two things, that's kind of, it's not much to it. How, how else could we, you know, for retain business and support expansion?
Well, I've got an idea, like I said last month. Streamline one goal, I think it's gonna be real simple or real ridiculous, is actual name change. I mean, I haven't heard anyone say Arkansas City, unless you're not local. Now, it seems monumental, but that's a state problem, I mean. They get on board with one name, Arc City, it's even right there in four thirteen, you put Arc City, why not just use it? It's not a change, it's just streamlined. Makes sense to me, but I'd like to see the, we keep it up to the city commission to vote so we can get on about August ballot for local question. Official little change from Arkansas City to Arc City. Is that a within reason? Anyway.
I like it. I had this debate with somebody yesterday doing applications. And they're moving into town and they had no idea what to call it. Pizza Ranch corporate, they have no idea what to call us. So we're, we are Arc City P on. I mean, we, we never use Arc City. In fact, when I ordered flooring for Pizza Ranch, and my flooring guys ended up in Arkansas. In, in Arkansas, and then when the guys come lay the rubber flooring in the kitchen, Arkansas. So I have never used Arc City, Arkansas City.
Now, we met them all the way back to McCool, when the. Boy that was ordered the first greenhouse here. It wound up in Arkansas, they dumped it off the train and said, borrow you, I get a truck.
My flooring guys were so far south that they refused to come back and play in the floor. They headed to Georgia. So I had to fly two guys in from Kansas City.
So just.
Coming from. I'm another whole state.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm for it.
Yeah.
So.
The idea of naming something, the Arkansas record for thirty miles, when the whole west of the world calls it, Arkansas, I'll grab it to Mexico.
We could be our own entity, Arc City, and everyone knows where you are, what it is.
Yeah.
Right now. If you sign the change letter and any state paid for it, let me know, I'll help you. But anyhow, piggyback on our promotion with it, with Arcara. You know, they're signing, yes, we are Arc City. You get it. I mean, it just makes sense to me, and I think.
Yeah.
City ballot for a question.
Yeah, the citizens would definitely.
Yeah, that's what they say, you know, they say.
And we, and we have the mayor here, so.
I, I've always liked it. I mean, I, I think it just, yeah.
We put it on the next agenda, city commission, then?
Standing at the museum, pointing to me why it's called Arkansas City instead of, you know.
Yeah.
Way and.
Like, yes, no.
The French called it, and I'm not sure which one, but the French called it one way and the Spanish called it the other way. I think the Spanish called it Arkansas and the French called it Arkansas. There are no W and N, but that's how they pronounced it. There was a big debate at the museum over.
Well, I read, the first is Walnut City, and then post office was coming in, we already have Walnut City, gotta be something else. Oh, well, we named it after this river, what's the other river here? Oh, the Arkansas, we have to be that. And they go, well, it's too much Arkansas for this place. We tip our hat to the state, Kansas, say like that, Arkansas.
And the idea.
That didn't translate well over a hundred years.
The idea that we need to change the name is there's an Arkansas City, Arkansas already.
Which is, I mean, that's a friend from a.
And it's a little like changing traditional name.
All right.
Thank you.
So put on a city like Kansas.
I could probably.
When's your next meeting? Not one bad, he's.
He's already got sides made.
Gonna change the city limit sign tomorrow.
Hey, I still have mine, I have a toll booth on a bypass, wanna make some money.
But, yeah. Got a big search. Get a big, sort of like, kind of beam it up, old score, city.
I actually like the, the conversation.
Well, being a deadline to get on the August ballot, I don't understand requirements to get local question on. If it's local, you can get on. If it's a state thing, it's too late. Let's just local question and add on the August ballot. That's what I'm trying to be.
I think it's, special question will be eight thousand or ten thousand dollars to our special private.
Okay, we don't need that. Let's do it online. Unofficially, this is nice. More people vote on it instead of both.
Our city, yes.
That's more people looking at that. So yes, unofficial hand, who's in charge of that?
Oh, you run that, our city, yes. What is the poll?
I'd like to see the opposition.
If you change Ark City, I insist that we have a vote.
Okay, actual Ark, like those aren't.
Hey Josh, this database. People call quite often. You've got a lot of entrepreneurs that just don't know where to start. If you could get a, a list of vacant buildings in the contractor's hands twice a year, at least then we would know. I encourage entrepreneurship. So if I know a building is vacant, I can match that building with a potential tenant to start a business. And that's kind of some of that fostering the whatever. But if you have a list that you can get in the contractor's hands every six weeks or six months, I mean, twice a year. Right. I mean, that's a place to start.
So, well, when I think of vacant building, I think of, of building that's unable to be occupied. Not ones.
Well, that's uninhabitable.
Okay.
So vacant is an empty building like a Gorgon's building.
Yeah.
Uh, we almost bought Gorgon's just to put something in there cause it needed to be. So that's a vacant building.
Are those buildings on the real estate, on Realtors list?
Some. Realtor.com doesn't list, um, commercial properties and that's what a lot of these, this is what you're talking about is commercial properties. It doesn't show up Realtor.com. So.
Also, you know, some people might be looking for opportunities to rehab these buildings.
For sure, for sure. I mean, you get it to the contractor's hands, I mean, they can still figure out on there.
I will, I will dig into that even more immediately. I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to her about that. So other goals and talk about enhancing the quality and availability of local workforce. I think this is pretty self expanded. We already worked with Cali first and the school district. Get the business ending the school. So that people can, so that the students can actually learn what happens. So this is really good for kids that don't really wanna go off college. If somebody, if Creeks don't get in their GE, you get in their camp back to the schools and start talking to them about what it would mean to be in that. I think some of that is happening. It's just one of the curbs. Same thing with college, college. They're working on, they're, they are vocational schools. And they're working on building trades right now, trying to bring that program into fruition because clearly have a shortage. All of them, so from builders to plumbers, to electricians, to HJC installers. So we wanna encourage that to keep happening, whatever we can do to do that. And then of course also do continue John Fairs for the same reason. Just make sure that people understand, not just students, everybody understands. I think we got a pretty good level of course. We just need to use it a little better.
And I have enhanced quality and availability. It goes back to the incubator. Need to foster, to encourage home based ball business. Because home based business is just an example. And we have the example, even in Ark City where mom was baking goods out of her house. And now she has a storefront downtown. So we have an opportunity to increase our business viability by giving small business an opportunity to learn how to be a small business, which it should be. And I've always been under the impression that should be a change permission to that. It should be a Main Street mission to do that. But we don't have officially Main Street. Let's at least go on record, we're going to encourage home and small business development in Ark City. Might need some training or some. Training and mentorship and at, at least having someone step up and say, you got a problem? We'll find a solution for you. It could be service for retired executives in Wichita coming down here once a month just to go have a meeting with Baba on how to run his business and give. Was the chamber doing? I don't think they are. It's not a lot of them. And, and I'm not talking about the chambers. I'm talking about chambers all over the place. Because every community I've lived in have been weak in fostering home and small business.
Yeah. Some of that could come through the incubator.
Correct.
But I, I, I think that is a good, that attract people. If people have ideas, they just don't have to make it happen.
Right.
They can send it up.
And service core retired executives really does is you have, you have a problem? You don't know how to build widgets. Let's help you buy someone that builds widgets. And all you are is a doctor. I find that most people are good at whatever service or, or manufacturing product or so. Where they lack is the actual business itself, the accounting aspect.
How do you market it?
Yeah. Marketing taxes, IRS, things like that. But we really need to foster.
I didn't. Most of that, yes, I, I think that's a good one to add under this goal.
Yes. And it doesn't necessarily have to be an incubator program. It just needs to be an organized, dedicated process that some people are willing to take an interest in helping Baba and Suzanne be successful in Ark City. And even like, um, you know, have one website or some brochure.
Yeah. Any other thoughts about economic development? We haven't already talked.
Is there anything for like property taxes for the downtown building? I know some of those buildings are pretty big and the taxes are pretty high. So if you wanna move in there, you can't be just a mom and pop shop. You gotta be somebody making some money.
There are some programs out there, even for improvements recovered by the neighborhood revitalization. That covers the improved, not the. So that doesn't help the current situation. There's also, it depends on what you're gonna do. And but there are gesture revenue bonds that can be used for some operations. Problem is those are expensive to get started. So you have to have a cer, there's a certain threshold that you have to pass in order to make something like that work. If you're a big entity, like say Creeks though, you have a problem. Uh, but some of the smaller like downtown, that would be a struggle. And beyond that, taxes. That's a tough one.
Historically, IRVs are notorious for corruption.
There can be problems.
Yeah, I just think that that's kind of a barrier because a lot of the people wanna go in downtown on big names. They're giving something small and they're paying five grand a year and property taxes, that's a pretty good hit.
Not, not all we can do to, again, to reduce the current one, but we have lots of tools to reduce the increase. And also some sort of artificial ones. Like we have the ability to do CID's, Community Improvement District. So if it's a retail facility, they can charge additional sales tax on top of what they're returning. For example, Wesley Hardware and Dollar Tree and the car wash, or the car wash, you don't really feel it. But those two businesses, they have a higher rate. And the reason that they did that is because that extra money that they're collecting for that program, they get, they basically get a check.
Ace Hardware has some amount of the talent that's not like people somewhere else.
No, it is, well, the reason they're included by.
Difficulty to public money. Updates, especially for.
That, that has drawbacks.
As far as downtown taxes, a lot of people aren't aware that the appraiser is always willing to talk into them.
Yeah.
About their taxes. Laurie, she calls me at least once a month, just visits several times to hear about property taxes. So she is more than willing to communicate with anybody and then she'll do digging deep to see if they can help them.
So here a business, I mean, the same building, the taxes may need to be different based on what's in there.
Correct. I mean, there's a lot of variables I can do to one business isn't making much. Correctness.
One of the places I heard, I heard was some of the code requirements, in particular fire code requirements. Just wasn't feasible to put a sprinkler system. A good thing is where, so maybe that's something to look at, making exceptions on the. Also the code requirements, as long as it goes with creative safety.
Yeah, we actually have adopted the internationally existing building code, which allows the building official to make certain adjustments. One of the adjustments actually was to fire sprinklers. In fact, the, the Chinese restaurant is an example of that. They did not have to sprinkle that building. Instead, what they did was put in a fire. Which is still not super cheap, but it's a heck of a lot cheaper than putting in sprinklers. So there, there's some little things that if you done same thing with ADA improvements, there's some things that you can kinda get around. Like elevator, that sort of thing. And then to a certain extent, your, your egress stuff is finer things you can manipulate there.
We'll be good looking things other than just. Cut costs.
Fire sprinkler, it's, it's a tricky thing. My, I was a fire chief for years at the Derby. Commercial buildings are one thing. You know, we don't have to fire sprinkler a lot of stuff. But when you put commercial with residential, at what cost is a person's life? You know, that's where you really have to, yeah, it's a lot of money, but you lose one person because the Chinese restaurant gets caught on fire. And that's, that's where it really comes into play. When you mix the two and.
Well, the ones in most of these buildings go.
Well, even more important, if someone drops a match, that building's gonna be gone.
Yeah, three buildings.
Correct. Correct. So I'm, I'm probably a little too strict this one way. And probably one of the reasons I haven't developed downtown.
Well, the issue is like you have, for example, the Chinese building, Chinese restaurant side. You know, I, I think that story is three buildings, private research, right? I doubt they're occupying first, second, third store. So why would you be required to sprinkle?
The building next door, for example, is.
Yeah.
They, they're, they've been working on the upper floor. They're actually gonna lay down there. But they all get on the storefronts on the street levels. They're eventually gonna, actually, I think there still is a, a hair salon or something.
Safe salon.
I agree with bringing it to a safety, preservation, a lot of it's always first, but one, at some point it becomes, you know, too sort of counterproductive to.
But you deal in egress in these downtown buildings also. So yeah, how you jump on them? And you're literally trapped.
Yeah.
Box.
I think the AC office building is a good example, Joe with five, five, let's go rehab. Shut down because of the cost of the sprinkler system.
That may have been one of the reasons, but I think Marvin, it's just he didn't try to do anything.
What were you saying?
The AC office building.
Well, I mean, that's just what I heard.
That's it. That's a very strange. And now someone in New York goes and they want a million bucks and it's like, man.
I think it's a same part.
Which one's the AC office building?
It's a, I think it's a Fifth Avenue. No, it's just north.
It's not the, oh, that's a big.
The big, the tall.
Yeah, they live. Did you track that down for me, Canyon? The AC, the big five, ten story, whatever building? You tracked it down, didn't you? Where they live?
I can't remember. I think they live in.
That's what boss is saying.
I think though they live in, like on the east coast.
Yeah, I think, I wanna say it's like Hampton in Virginia or something.
Yeah, I think they live on the east coast when I gave them city.
Well, that's something else we need to address. We have a lot of people who don't have anything vested in this town, the old buildings, you know?
The town.
Is there something we could do about?
You can't take their buildings away from them.
I think that's a problem. What's the city commission in like?
No, you got the fence up and moving on.
Yeah. I can see it now. The city commission takes it. But if you have an address outside of Ark City, your taxes just went five times up.
I like that.
And people in New York are still going, that's still cheap.
Right, right, right. So.
So there's nothing you can do about that?
There's not, nothing, but it's incredibly difficult. Uh, even the city of Wichita has struggled with doing kind of what you're suggesting about taking it all in. You can do it, but it's really difficult and you're gonna be locked up in court for years.
Oklahoma had a problem with. I would say people from other countries borrow by large quantities.
Yes.
Acres and they pass them on.
And turn them into marijuana farms.
So that's a little different situation.
New local org is to support. Work at work rates.
I think this could go along with the list of vacant buildings as far as. Yeah, someone has that list, talks to them. It'd be interesting to know why you own something.
Especially.
Well, a lot of them were inheritancees. Yeah, they got it from people who lived here at the time. They have no intention of coming back, but.
Why would they not sell it?
Well, they just don't, you know, because trying to, the one that I'm thinking of, you know, the guy said, look, that was my, that was my guardian father. And I'm like, what? And I was smaller. But he said, you know, bottom line is it costs way too much money. I can't sell it. I can't, you know?
So how do we? So they need motivation. You can see tax about incurred. You don't do something, they're telling. You know, you're asking me that one.
Couldn't they be sold as is or at least to build it?
Don't pay your taxes. I mean, we have no basis.
There could be something though, if they need to borrow money, might throw.
Sort of seizing problem.
Well, I'm just saying, if we have somebody that would buy assets, that would connect to that.
Now that, definitely. We, we've done that a few times. So it's easier for, I sit Canyon on property and Josh and find the owners, track them down, see if they'll sell. So the East and West Coast, they have a lot more money than we do here. So you're sitting on a junk building that it's worth thirty, forty, fifty, a hundred grand and they're thinking it's worth six hundred grand.
That's the problem. It's perception.
Exactly. It must be fair. I had. Exactly. It must be fair. I had someone come and offer me a ton of money for one of my properties. And they're from California, and I sold it.
Why not?
Why not? I mean, it was, and Lori called me, she said, "You sold it four hundred thousand more than it was the price that." No problem. She said, "They're upside down right now, but to them, it's cash money, they don't care. As long as I think cash flows, it's dirt cheap for them."
Can we also bring in this type of values and voters and stuff as well?
Well, they live over there, they, they know how to manage it, but, I mean, it's, they bring in a lot of money, so.
Yeah, that's true.
And the taxes triple on it, which is more taxable.
Yeah. Those are the same.
It's a big thing, the west coast.
The west coast thinking, get it out there.
I just heard the horror stories in Austin.
Okay, well, let's kind of move on. Like I said, it's about. You really want to focus too much?
I guess you just a little bit. So maybe on this database, we could include the owner's information, so yes, they contact.
And that info's on the county website.
It is.
Sorry.
I wonder if we're talking about some Virginia. Now, actually, finding, getting their phone number.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
But you have their mailing.
Right, I had a database to get to.
You would have your mailing address.
Get their, get their address or their. Contact. Get their phone number, get their real. Get their email address. How come they're poor?
I'll point out that this information would be viable if there's ever a disaster, because if there is a disaster and these buildings are the only buildings available for a business, having that information, it's gonna be like gold to the people coming in to help in recovery or just to recover their own stuff.
All right.
I'm just briefly talking about it.
He said thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds is what I said. So what I'm asking you to do, I've made some little changes here, added a few new things. There's even a map in there that was supposed to be in the oval plant, it wasn't. Of the parks in the city. I would encourage you to look this over. I put some notes in there for the next time when we have a meeting, we have a chance to spend some real time on it. That's kind of making it better. And think about, like, what you want, the future of our parks, like, for example. What you want to do is to start preparation, that, that's sort of, that's. That's pretty all I wanted to do.
I just want to address one, we kind of skipped a, hence calling. Workforce needs a variety, needs to be. It looks like a college, it was kind of. This is about chapter four. Oh, we did?
Yeah. Well, that was my final thing. I'm going to be supposed to be out with my dad for harvest that week. We didn't table any things, we took care of all the business tonight. And we have not had a meeting off since forever. So my goal was just to, to go ahead and let the June meeting be canceled. And take this up in July and.
Give you a motion.
I can't, you can't. I was just not going to actually send.
Is everyone okay with taking the next one off?
If you are. You can show up if you want, but I won't be here. But I want to bring that up since I'm at the meeting anyways and been meeting all this time.
I just have one question. This, we talked about. We saw a trap.
I didn't agree with you. My goal is to get it done. That's what I would like. The deadline for the comprehensive plan to be.
It's not gonna affect any.
It's we.
Pushing on there.
Building here, when?
They have to be here.
Okay.
Sorry.
I think last year we said that. We said the summer. I understand that.
But also don't know what you're meeting off, you see.
Yeah.
We're here.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Yes.
Kids online, everybody weigh in and vote and tell everybody. Wasn't, you hear the opposition, really, you see how.